We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. If you would please join me in a moment of silent prayer or reflection. Thank you. If you'd join me for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in its home with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna go ahead and do the call to public, the first call to -- oh, I'm sorry, Carol Wilcox. I'm so excited, there was a call to public.
Kathy Cox?
Here.
Ellen Warren?
Here.
John Maston?
Here.
Pat Rooney?
Here.
Nicole Cohen?
Here.
Okay, now we're gonna go ahead and do the call to public. And we only have one unless there's anybody else out there that hasn't turned their paperwork in. So it looks like Ms. Kaia Lam will be doing the call to public if you would like to come up to the podium. You can just tip it down if you'd like.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam President and the members of the governing board. My name is Kaia Lam. I am a fifth grader at Starland Elementary School and I am part of my school's student council and NEHS. I came here to talk to you about how I believe that our school should have more options in standardized school shirts. Speaking on behalf of myself and the students that have elected me for the representative on student council, we would appreciate more color, style, and fabric options. One reason that our school should have colorful uniforms is because we're kids. We should be able to express ourselves with vibrant color, not only at home on weekends, but at school too. Black, white, and gray are limiting our growth in the sense that growing up is not only learning reading, writing, and arithmetic, but also about learning how to dress appropriately and color coordinate for the professional world. When my brother was in preschool, I would always admire his colorful uniforms and the softness of the fabric. However many times my mother would wash his uniforms, they always came out of the wash looking new. His school was and still is using an online company called French Toast. Online ordering and having it shipped directly to the students' homes help the parents, kids, and school. Our teachers, librarians, and staff would no longer have to worry about clothing the students. It would remain the parents' responsibility and free up the school staff's time. I also picked French Toast to present to you because they donate 5% back to the school. This is a great incentive for our schools. Shirts are reasonably priced and can be passed down year to year without falling apart. When ordering online, there are many coupons, clearance deals, and free shipping offers. My mom paid an average of $7.80 per shirt for my brother. French Toast offers express shipping, priority mail, and embroidered emblems. Our current shirts are screen printed. When you iron them, they must transfer that orange color all over the shirt. With French Toast embroidery, our LHUSD emblem will always remain intact. I am proud to be a part of Starland Elementary School and would be even prouder to wear beautiful, colorful, and high-quality uniform shirts to represent Lake Havasu Unified School District. Please consider this for not only myself, but for all of our students in Lake Havasu. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Can I pass these out to the board?
Absolutely. Okay, we're gonna move on to our recognition of visitors. And I believe the first one is the Nautilus Gardening Club. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you. Good evening, members, Madam President, members of the governing board, and district personnel. It is my pleasure and honor to introduce to you Mrs. Carol Wilcox. Mrs. Wilcox is our coordinator for the Nautilus Secret Garden Club. I'll let her go ahead and give you the presentation.
Good afternoon. Actually, I should say good evening. Nautilus Secret Garden Club started this school year. Originally, it was a grant, and it was considered the Nautilus Secret Garden. It had a pond that was in it. We took the funds that was left over after the grant, and we actually removed the pond as it wasn't working any longer. And we began this gardening club, so I'll begin by this. Our purpose is, when our school club was created, to encourage students in making meaningful choices for their future. Students cultivate, nurture, and aid in sustaining a healthy environment. Recycling is a major topic of conversation. Sorry. We discuss ways in reducing and reusing natural resources. Students assist in germination. In the germination process of a seed, they understand the importance of the nutrients it needed to help it grow, and they benefit from its harvest. Members fundraised to help purchase materials needed for major projects. Most recently, the club wrote letters in support of the San Diego Clean Water Movement. So those are some of the main purposes we've done. These are our club members. We choose them. There's actually a different kind of process. We have third, actually, fourth, fifth, and sixth grader who participates in it. We try to keep the group small, as it's only me right now that's running the club after schools. So we keep it small, so it's just very, we have that one-on-one communication. These are the projects that we've done. Originally, you'll see the pile in front of the garden area. We had a company that came in and refinished the whole garden. We began our seed growing. Students have painted trashcans. They have, we have sustained this project based on our fundraising. We have not had to touch the account besides the major construction done to the garden area. So they do a lot of fundraising, which helped purchase the trashcans and the paint, and we continue recycling and doing all those things upkeep throughout the school year. These are some of the fundraisers we've done. We've sold candy grams during Valentine's and holidays. We do cotton candy on movie nights during the PTSD. The kids are 100% involved in creating any of the posters, the sales that go on, and they have a great time doing so. Making a change in our environment in addition to the recycling that we do. We've just recently, I have a friend, she comes from San Diego, with the whole sewage pipeline and the leakage. I decided to get the garden club to write letters and send it to the Clean Water Movement. This was a huge experience for the kids. They get to know that if something does change, they played a role in it, even though we're hundreds of miles away. So that was a pretty amazing, exciting event. And then here's our future. Due to our heat, it's really hard to sustain the garden outdoors because it's so hot, and we'd have to create a bubbler system that would run 24/7. We have spring break, and I personally would like a break and not be there watering the plants every day. So with a little bit of research, we found out we have this gardening kit, which would be a good way to sustain this garden indoors. Obviously, outdoors as well, but especially during this heat. Very realistic. The only thing it doesn't do is grow fruiting plants, tomatoes and stuff, which they'll still get the experience out of this. So the purpose of actually bringing this up is in hopes that other schools can follow along in the experience and just get kids involved. I see it in their eyes. They are extremely proud. I do have a couple of students that were here, one of them that has participated. So that's it. Thank you very much.
I think that's fantastic. I'm happy to see gardening clubs. Do you know how many of our schools have a gardening club? I know that they're doing it at the high school, or they have a garden at the high school.
So we don't, but we've been discussing it. We kind of did things opposite. We got a donation this year from Buses by the Bridge. They donated $1,000 to our STEM club. And the STEM club just recently ordered one of our gardens. And so I think that's the direction we're headed also. We just ended up doing it oppositely. So we'll probably have to get into contact. I'll have you.
So has there been any discussion about aquaponics?
No, there hasn't. I mean, and I'm up for anything. I'm currently at my own house, and this is why I decided to bring this into the kids. I even, I raise chickens and horses, and my whole backyard is covered in every animal and children and whatnot. And I love it, so it was just fun for me to bring it in to the school environment. I'm there all the time anyway. And I have a bigger area to work with here at the school, so. But I just, I get such a good feeling out of it, and you know, I see it in the students. They love it. So I mean, that's ultimately where I kind of just started. You know, it's gonna grow. I know it is. You're gonna find some twists and turns, like unfortunately, the weather. I know I'm home all the time, so I have the ability to water my plants in the morning and, you know. But we all have responsibilities, and it is really hard in this kind of environment. So to have this would be amazing, so.
Well, I know that they changed the law to allow, if you have a garden at school, that you can actually grow the vegetables and eat them without getting a food handler's permit or some crazy permit.
Yes.
So I think it's exciting because I think the young kids, if they participate in something like this and see their vegetables and fruits grown, they will be more interested.
We've done experiments where it's like, alright, let's take the tomatoes that we've grown and buy store-bought ones, and we do the taste test, and every single one of them will choose the tomatoes that we grew, you know, from home or in our garden. So it was, you know, it was amazing.
Well, aquaponics is a great way to get around the harsh environment out here. Thank you very much. Next, we're gonna hear from Carol, the president of the Lake Havasu Education, City Educational Association.
Madam President, board members, superintendent, sires, directors, staff, and community members. It's been a busy, somewhat frustrating month, mainly focusing on our legislators and decisions made at the Capitol. We really thought our efforts in connecting and talking with our District Five legislators were working positively for public education and more specifically for LHUSD. But in turn, we are highly disappointed in the decision of the vote yes on the voucher bill. But we are still following a few bills. SB 1039, SB 1042, SB 1282, SB 1036, and near and dear to our part at LHUSD is SB 1156, along with what Governor Duce is going to do with the budget in. The first three bills have to deal with teachers, teacher standards, certificates, and evaluations. The fourth one is on charters and exempting them from role-making policies. And then our final one, the SB 1156, is specifically for our time, our seniors, and the audit that we had last year. But we have began this month with great news. One, we have three people that are receiving an award on May 13th, and I am very excited to share. One would be Bailey Bagby. She is the recipient of this year's AEA Foundation of Teaching and Learning 2017 Mel Wilcoxon Future Educator Scholarship Grant. This scholarship is awarded to recipients who want to pursue a teaching career. And if you know Bailey, she is born and raised here, and we are excited that we have one that's moving towards education. We also are going to be recognizing Jack Hammett, who, if you don't know who he is, he started the Havasu Business and Teacher Alliance. So we have this issue of a lot of times, teachers are spending money out of their pocket. If we go to him, he finds the money. He goes to people all over town, and he searches, and he walks in, and he delivers. So we are recognizing him with the AEA Partners in Education Award. Jack demonstrates the high standards and spirit that this award was created to recognize. The award honors those that exhibit exemplary support for local public schools. The award created by AEA Delegate Assembly is a way to demonstrate our strong belief in the importance of our community's support to the success of our public schools. And then the final one is to Coach Carl Thompson and our LHHS football program, who are the recipients of the Arizona Thomas R. Brown Athletic Grant. They will be receiving a check for $1,000 to go towards, I believe, uniforms. That's who they're gonna be putting that towards. And I think, Mr. Rucker, are they coming? Do you know? Have you talked to Coach?
He has shared it.
Coach, oh, he has not?
Well, he shared that he's getting that grant the night that he got the email. I got the text.
Alright, so all of these will be acknowledged. I know Coach Thompson won't be able to actually make the May 13th, but the other two, I believe, were going to be at the May 13th luncheon. It's called the Salute to Excellent Luncheon in Phoenix for Scottsdale. But we will be planning on a local acknowledgement of them. That we will be inviting everybody, because we are gonna be celebrating the end of the year, as well as our golden anniversary. This is our 50th year. LHDA has been established for 50 years, along with, I believe, the district. So we are celebrating 50 years.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. If I can get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Seconded.
Did you catch the second?
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Ellen Warren?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Okay, old business. Action item 5.1, Mrs. Sire or Mr. Rucker?
Madam President, members of the board. It is recommended that the governing board approve the second reading of the update to policy IKFA regarding Lake Havasu High School's early graduation. The change in paragraph one of the policy requires students to submit their written requests for early high school completion prior to the first day of the semester of the graduation year. There's no, there has been no change to the policy since its first reading on March 14, 2017.
Do I have a motion to approve action item 5.1?
I make a motion. We approve it as written.
Any discussion? Carol?
Ellen Warren?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Pat Rooney? Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
New business, action item 6.1. This would be approval of the Thunderbolt Middle School Student Handbook for 2017-18. Mrs. Sire.
Thank you, Madam President. We do have our items 6.1 and 6.2, which are our student handbooks for the elementary schools and the middle school. And with some discussion at the work session about possibly revising those prior to the beginning of the 2017-18 school year. After having a discussion with the principals, our request is that we postpone these till the next meeting for some minor revisions and that the principals be allowed a year to make the major revisions to the handbooks.
I move that we postpone agenda item 6.1 till the next meeting.
Enter 6.1 and 6.2.
6.1 and 2.
Any discussion on that? Or questions?
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Ellen Warren?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Are we at 6.3? Is that the one that was pulled?
It's the one that we are going to be holding because the therapist is no longer available.
So action item 6.3, approval of purchase of contracted speech services with Soliant Health. Can I get a motion to postpone? Is that what you want to do, or are you just pulling it?
We're actually gonna hold it because we're not moving forward because we no longer have a therapist available.
No, postponed. Can I get a motion to postpone action item 6.3? Do I have a second?
I second this time.
I had to have a question. Was it a matter of timeliness? If we had been able to give the offer some time ago, would we have hired this person or not?
Actually, this is one of the current contracted providers that we've been working with. We've been talking to her, but as we had mentioned, it's very hard to fill these positions in the competition. She's choosing to go to another area.
Any other questions? Carol?
John Maston?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Ellen Warren?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Action item 6.4, approval of purchase of contracted occupational services with Soliant Health. Mrs. Walter.
Madam President, members of the board. It is recommended that the governing board approve the purchase of contracted occupational therapy with Soliant Health for the 17-18 school year, not to exceed $108,000. The district has taken action to recruit highly qualified related service staff and has had difficulty filling these openings. Soliant Health is an approved vendor as part of the Arizona Safe Contract, RFP 14002-5, where requesting approval of the purchase of contracted speech therapy services for the 17-18 school year. At the Shinsy occupational therapy, excuse me. With Soliant Health entering not exceed $72 an hour. The district is obligated to provide the provision of services for eligible students to receive a pre-appropriate public education for students requiring related services as required in the Individual Disability Education Act. Funds from the Maintenance and Operation Budget will be used to pay for these services. This has been reviewed by legal. The vendor, the contracted person, is an individual that we currently have under contract, so we will be able to sustain that continuity of service by renewing this with the therapists that we currently have.
I so moved. Maybe I could ask it before we move in second. Do I have a motion to approve 6.4?
I make a motion to approve 6.4.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes. I see here a contract for $108,000, and I've done a little homework. I understand that there's a shortage of these talented people nationally. But I also know that our salary schedule is woefully under a gear for what we're even seeing in this contract. I think we need to sharpen up our pencils as a board member and find a way that we can bring these people in-house as employees of the district, as opposed to continuing the contract. I believe that we've got some overhead in a contract like this that goes to the vendor. And I wouldn't be surprised if it didn't start at $18,000 and work its way up from there. If we have these problems, we should be able to bring in, find a way to retain an employee to do these services that are federally mandated under the AEA Act, and not continually write these contracts. I have a problem with this because, you know, we start talking about continuity of care. We start talking about some of the things that we should be doing for a special needs student or a student that's been identified with a deficiency that can be made up by one of these occupational or physical therapists. We need to have people on staff. And when we start talking about contract, we're saying, gosh, one year we'll have them. Cross our fingers the next year that we will. I think you get an employee, and you have more of a personal relationship with an employee, and you're gonna have a better chance of keeping them here in our district. And so I'd like to see us move in that direction, to where we start literally sharpening up our pencil and figuring out, what does it take? What's the affordability point on this? And how do we also address the rest of our staff that we have under roof? And how do we make sure that we're not gonna lose them because somebody comes in and starts taking them? I know that we've lost somebody in the past year or two to another provider here in town, and that's a provider that does DDD. And I hate to say it, we should be, in a school district setting, we should be able to meet or keep the pay that medicate pays. When we start talking about DDD, we're talking medicaid. So I wanna see us sharpen up our pencils. I wanna see us get a little bit smarter. I wanna find a way that we can start filling these positions internally as opposed to contracting. Because all we're doing is, we're paying a company to give us an employee for the short term. We need to think long-term and how that continuity of care works.
May I ask, Aggie, how realistic is that in this market?
It will be a challenge, but I do think if we have a more competitive salary, which, you know, these positions are targeted positions that we have identified for several years now. One of their recommendations with the passage of the override is to do that salary study. And looking at the market, you know, it's gonna be tough to fill. Like I said, even at the contracted rates, you know, being able to maintain them or recruit them is not always a guarantee that you're gonna be able to fill those positions. We did have an opening and had to look alternative therapy model this year. But it definitely will, obviously, if we have a competitive salary, looking to what those positions are paying in our community, we are more apt to recruit. We'll be able to hire, hopefully sustain them in our community.
What is a competitive salary?
Well, you have to look at the entire package. I can't really speak to that much. I know that talking to some of the therapist agencies that do provide that, you know, a lot of these coming in under these contracts get a housing allowance, so they have their salary plus housing plus sign-on notices. And they vary depending on the community where they're coming in. But we do know that, you know, looking at just our salary comparison, or what the starting, we're probably at least $15,000 to $20,000 probably under market.
And what is it right now?
I think you just updated and looked at the related services that you're looking around. Was it 36 starting out for the speech therapist?
I sent all of you guys a package that explained what it was, including the, well, the total package, which was the health insurance and everything else.
It ranged, if memory serves me, anywhere from, for full-time, anywhere from about $55,000 on up to $80,000. At this point, is what we're paying now.
The total compensation package.
Right, but that's 20%.
That's all, right. That's fully burdened.
And I understand the situation right now, but I think Mr. Maston has a good point because there's an element here that's beyond money. There's a loyalty and a continuity element that having our own employee in-house would be a tremendous benefit over the long run. It just, you know, you would have the same person in that position providing us with continuity and providing us with loyalty. And when you contract with another company, their loyalty is to that company. And I think it's a good point.
Is this contract to fill somebody in the short term, or is this something we're looking to do the start of next school year? We're trying to prepare for that.
This is for the 17-18 school year. And this is the time, like I said, it's very tough. If we wait till August, September, you know, we're not gonna have qualified people available. But this actually is an individual that we currently have had this year under a contract, so we're excited that she's willing to come. And the goal would be to be working on trying to fill. Most of these agencies do have within their contract, and then here it's on number seven. You know, obviously, after a year, then not being under contract, they could come back. But if you were to offer to hire them, you would have to pay that agency's fee that first year. So you can negotiate that, and that's something we can also look at, you know, moving forward.
We keep those positions open, though. Even though we're contracted, those positions continually are open. They're not closed simply because we've hired a contracted person.
And we have like a 60-day notice for without due cause. If somebody did come walking through the door, then we could, you know, within that time period.
How many applications did you have last year for these positions?
For the therapist positions? We had two openings in speech, and we hired one recruit. We had two openings in speech and we hired one recruit, as we had mentioned, that was actually an international recruit filled that. The speech, we did not have any other applicants apply. We did not have any occupational therapy applicants in district, no psychologist. You know, we had two openings and those positions are posted, and we have, just so that the board does know some of the things that we do. Obviously, there are several websites that the state helps to recruit statewide, looking at the openings as a district, as a state level, and all the different recruiting fairs that we do participate. But we also have a list of colleges that have programs that produce psychologists, special related therapists, OTPT. We contact them, reach out, get those posted on their boards, and then we have even posted even with some of the national associations in hopes, and we had zero applicants respond, even when we were looking at a national level for the school psychologists.
And I post through Arizona Republic, through Monster, through Indeed, so we use quite a few different places.
And what do you think that's attributed to? Is that the lack of salary that we have or is that?
Well, I think that contributes to it, but I think we also need to take a look at the fact that most of the districts in the state of Arizona are looking for these same people. Even though they may have a higher salary than what we offer, they're still not able to fill their positions either.
And it is national. I mean, when you look at a school psychologist, especially if you've got a doctorate level program coming out, they are looking nationally at that. And what you need to know is, you know, the younger generation is a little bit different than some of us who have been in the employment field for a while. I mean, they're looking at that opportunity, they're looking at the adventure. Again, their college tuition fees, their student loan debt, they're having to really look at where they can get the best opportunity for them to start their career. We do have in our countywide, I mean, all of the districts, Bullhead, King Med, have been challenged to fill school psychologists. I mean, it's not just been a one-year thing. The school psychologist has been the most recent one that we've seen at level. We've been dealing with the therapist for several years, but, you know, people are retiring, and there are fewer going into the education career field. There you are looking at more of the opportunities outside, obviously, speech, OTPT, and even the clinical psychologist can look at the medical world versus the education world for opportunities for advancement and careers and salaries.
I just spoke with the HR from Bullhead and Colorado River, and they're currently also looking for a psychologist, and they are offering over $10,000 more than what we're offering, and they're not filling their spot.
So, because this is a mandate, because we're required to have these positions and we have these contracts come up on a monthly basis, I wonder how much we're wasting, not that we're wasting it, but how much is being wasted in these constant contracts? So, I know we're doing the salary study in the fall, but does it make sense to maybe do the mandated positions that we need in advance of that? Because that's a big, the salary study, that would be huge for every position in the district. Maybe we should focus on what we're required for the federal government, and does this put any of our grants or any of our dollars in jeopardy? Like, what happens when we can't fill these positions?
I can answer that. If we're not able to provide the services, you put the district at risk of due process. A parent can file a complaint, and if we can't show due diligence that we have done everything to reasonably recruit and fill those positions, even considering alternative options like teletherapy, and we've had the opportunity or we're afforded that opportunity to provide those services, then the parent would be awarded that opportunity in looking at the cost to provide those services. Due process is very costly, you know, from a court perspective, but it's also time-wise for staff and the emotional piece. But we have to make up those services when we talk about that, because if we can't provide it, you know, and we've done everything, and we as a district have always tried to reach out. We look out to our community, we've worked, partnered with private sector, the therapists, we've reached out to every provider in our community that could provide those services, even individually contract. The requirement is looking at that, we do have to make up those services. That takes time, and then over time you keep compounding that, so it becomes more costly when you're in that mode where you may be having to contract out, and if you get into a due process, then if you have multiple due processes. So again, we don't want to be in that situation if we can, and that's why the state does seek contracting services as a reasonable option if you're not able to hire. They see teletherapy as a reasonable option if you can't hire a full-time or don't need a full-time or you can't provide that. And again, as long as we've shown due diligence by going out to the process and showing that we have done that, you know, we're not going to get our hands up for failure to comply because you can't, but we do have to be reaching out to show a big effort that we are being reasonable. And from a time and energy perspective, we need to convinceatory services, which has been almost the norm for the last five years. It seems like three of those five years we've had to do that with not having a therapist. You know, the time and energy that it takes for overtime, having therapists come in, working beyond their normal contracted hours, working over holidays and breaks, it is more costly when you get into that, looking at that. Plus, you do burn out your staff and greater risk of losing the staff that you do have.
Well, and as I had shared in the email as well, we would not only be looking at new hires, but we would need to look at the current staff because otherwise we would be back into an inversion situation. And we have three speech votes, we have two psychologists, we have one and a half.
And then one P G.
Yeah. So, you know, we're talking about a number of votes that we would have to address as well so that we wouldn't fall back into that inversion situation, so.
It just seems that it's an ongoing problem and it might be best to look at this before we do the salary study.
And even if we don't solve it, solve it, we should be sharpening up our pencil at some point and say, how can we work to solve this even if we're not successful?
Do we use teletherapy now?
We are currently using teletherapy for occupational therapy. We used teletherapy last year for speech. So, like I said, the last two years we weren't able to provide an onsite person even though we originally had contracted out, but they didn't come through, and again, to some of those challenges. But right now, we do have one OT that is teletherapy. However, we have entered into a contract to approve for an onsite therapist for next year. So, we plan to have two physicals present therapists on staff.
Is teletherapy cost-effective?
Actually, it's more costly because you also have to have a full-time support person that's there with them in addition, and you're not paying for that teletherapy at a reduced rate. They're pretty much getting the same rates, and in some situations, maybe even more money if you're not contracting for a full-time position, if you were just, you know, it works great for smaller districts that may just need, you know, one or two hours of service compared to contracting full-time if you don't have that. But it does cost, you know, another ten-plus dollars an hour on top to support that program.
Any other questions? We'll go ahead and call for the vote. Terry?
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Ellen Ward?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
John Maston?
With the sixty-day out from the contract, yes.
Kathy Cox on?
Yes. Action item six point five, approval of the food program permanent service agreement. Mr. Murray?
For Doug.
Thank you.
Madam President, Members of the Board, it is recommended the governing board approve the food program permanent service agreement to reflect the change of business services director from Elaine Wood to Michael Murray. The agreement was presented, as presented was previously approved by the Arizona Department of Ed in July of 2014, and I believe the spelling of President Cohen's name was correct on the new certification page.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? I'll go ahead and call for the vote.
Ellen Ward?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Contract against the next action item. That's a long contract. Action item six point six, approval of the summer food program permanent services agreement. Mr. Murray?
Madam President, Members of the Board, it is recommended the governing board approve the summer food service program permanent service agreement to reflect the change of business services director from Elaine Wood to Michael Murray. The agreement as presented was previously approved by the Arizona Department of Education in July of 2014, and again, the spelling of President Cohen's name was correct on the new certification page.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve action item six point six?
I make a motion to approve six point eight as written.
Do I have a second?
Correct.
Any discussion or questions? Call for the vote.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Ellen Ward?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Action item six point seven, the first presentation review of revised policies GCBD-R professional staff fringe benefits and GCQE retirement of professional staff members and GDBD-R support staff fringe benefits and GDQC retirement of support staff members. Mrs. Asayer.
Thank you, Mrs. Cohen, Members of the Board. We do recommend that the board suspend its own governing board policy, BGB, related to a first and second reading, and approve the first presentation of the policies as noted by Mrs. Cohen in that lengthy description, which relate to our professional staff fringe benefits, our retired professional staff, our support staff fringe benefits, and our retired support staff fringe benefits. This revision in the policy does remove the penalty for nonparticipation in the EBT wellness program.
Do you have a motion for action item six point seven?
I move to suspend governing board policy, BGB, related to the first and second reading and approve the first presentation of revised policies GCBD-R professional staff fringe benefits, GCQE retirement professional staff members, GDBD-R support staff fringe benefits, and GDQC retirement of support staff members.
Do I have a second?
I have a second. You get it. No, you have two seconds.
Is there any discussion or questions? I'll go ahead and call for the vote.
John Maston?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Ellen Ward?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Action item six point eight, approval to appoint two board members to Employee Benefit Trust Subcommittee.
Thank you, Mrs. Cohen, Members of the Board. The EBT has been reviewing their trust agreement, and after consideration and discussion with the current chair, the chair proposed and the assistant, excuse me, the Director of Business Services proposed that we have a subcommittee of EBT board members and the cabinet of governing board members to look at the trust document together, suggest revisions before we have the attorney's review, which would then save some attorney cost. And so it's the recommendation that we, as a board, the governing board, appoint two members to a subcommittee that would then come together with some members of the EBT board and myself and Mr. Murray to review the trust document.
Do I have a motion to approve action item six point eight?
I make a motion to approve six point eight as written. Second.
I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, so there will be two school board members on that. Right now, we have one school board member already on the EBT.
Well, we have one school board member on the EBT, but this is just a committee to work just on the trust documents.
So, this isn't like one of those?
This isn't the EBT board. This is just a committee to go over, because the document has gone back and forth with the attorney, and it just makes more sense, I think.
And the EBT will have on their agenda the same action item to appoint two of their members to the subcommittee.
So, did I have, did I have a second? Yes, because we are in discussion. I make a motion to amend action item six point eight and appoint John Maston as one of the committee members. And my, can I make a motion to appoint myself? And myself, sorry.
I'll second that. I shouldn't, but I will.
Any questions, comments? Go ahead and call for the vote.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Ellen Ward?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Action item six point nine, the first presentation and review of revised policies BGDB, board review of regulations, and LBD, LBD-E relations with charter schools. Mrs. Asayer.
Madam President, Members of the Board, we request that you approve the first presentation of these revised policies. The board review of regulation policy, there is a brief portion of wording that has been removed that is redundant, and policy LBD, which is relations with charter schools, has been deleted from the manual because that legislation authorizing it, or excuse me, the statute authorizing that has been rescinded.
Do I have a motion to approve action item six point nine?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Seven.
Any discussion or questions? I'll call for the vote.
Ellen Ward?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Action item six point one zero, the first presentation and review of revised policy JRR student surveys. Mrs. Asayer.
As you may recall, back in, forget which month now, actually, it was only a few months ago, we spent some time looking at the student survey policy based on the revisions to statute and ARS section fifteen dash one seventeen. This suggested revision now includes the list of the student family characteristics, which require a specific informed consent, so those would be listed in the policy instead of referred to in the policy. We did as a district add a statement, or a board added a statement early on, that we would not administer surveys under these criteria. There is one section of the statute, however, that allows the surveys to be administered, and we have noted in our policy as well that we would ask parent permission separately if we administered anything under D five. So, in addition to our amendment relating to it, this now lists the area that we would not survey.
Do I have a motion to approve six point one zero?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any questions?
I just want to mention to the folks that may not have read this, that this was designed strictly to protect the confidentiality of the children on any surveys that might be held.
Okay. You mean the policy was or what the board is doing? I need clarification on what you mean.
What the policy was, what we're doing with the policy.
What we are doing with the policy. Okay. I would agree with that. I'm wondering, I have a question. I'm wondering why we're not adding COPA and SIPA, and I apologize for not asking at the work session, but I just made the note when I was reviewing. So, we're complying with FERPA, Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, we're complying with IDEA and the PPRA, which Protection of People Rights Act, but we're not listing COPA or SIPA, and I don't have those right now. I wish I did. COPA, come on, John. Do you know what COPA and SIPA, come on.
It's a song.
It's a song. But I'm just wondering why we wouldn't include that, or is it too burdensome, or maybe we don't know?
I personally don't know the answer to that. I believe that those are related to internet protection. Is that one of them? And so I'm not certain that they apply under this particular policy, but I don't know that it's, that it would be harmful to say that we would comply with those.
Okay. Any thoughts? I just want to make sure we don't miss anything. And if it is a survey being done through the internet, then SIPA and COPA would both apply, although I think COPA is for thirteen and under, isn't it?
I think it is.
And we're definitely not doing surveys for thirteen and under. And we're definitely not doing surveys for 13 and under electronically.
Don't worry about it.
Okay. All right.
Would you like us to add that?
I would like to add at least SIPA.
I would add at least SIPA.
Yeah.
Make that revision and bring it back to the next meeting for second reading.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead and call for the vote.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Alan Moore?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes. Okay, action item 6.11. The first presentation and review of revised policy, GDJ, support staff assignments and transfers. Mrs. Asier.
Madam President, members of the board. It is recommended that the board approve the first presentation of revised policy, GDJ, support staff assignments and transfers. Per Arizona School Boards Association Policy Services Advisory dated February 2017, received March 15, the following policy revisions are being presented. Policy advisory number 574, policy GDJ, support staff assignments and transfer. Language has been modified in this policy to minimize misinterpretation and misapplication of policy pertaining to assignments and transfers of support staff.
Do I have a motion to approve 6.11?
Summate.
Any questions or discussion?
If I may point out that the board had a discussion at the work session regarding this policy, and the revisions based on that discussion were available this evening. And so rather than having the same language repeated, it has been condensed to the same language addresses assignments, transfers, and reassignments.
Okay, if there's no question, I'll call for the vote.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Alan Moore?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes. Action item 6.12. First presentation and review of revised policy, KHP, advertising in schools. Mrs. Asier.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. We did have a request from our board members at an earlier date to look at our advertising policy. And so we have taken a look at our advertising policy and the alignment with statute. What we have done is added a statement, because of the addition of interactive technology, that we've added the statement, advertisements that require students to enter personal information shall be denied. This would provide additional clarification for site principals who are approving paid advertising.
Do I have a motion to approve 6.12?
I make a motion, we approve 6.2 as written. Second.
Thank you, any questions or discussion? Call for the vote here.
Alan Moore?
Yes.
Alan Moore?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes. Action item 6.13. Discussion and possible action to establish board advisory committees, and appoint two board members to the subcommittees. Mrs. Asier.
Thank you. Excuse me. It's recommended that the board, after discussion, do the establishment of one or more advisory committees, and appoint a maximum of two board members to the subcommittee. There has been expressed interest by the board of having advisory committees or subcommittees, and there's some criteria under which those can be maintained. The backup documentation does give some information there. I did want to clarify, and information that's not in the backup here is that it doesn't have to be two, it can be one, it just can't be more than two. And the second thing is that I was watching a presentation on open meeting law, and one of the points that was made in relation to advisory committees is they must be formed in order to provide a recommendation to the board. So they're not for the purpose of just meeting, but they're around a purpose to provide a recommendation. So this action would be appropriate for the board to discuss the possible subcommittees, and then whether or not you would like to create those.
Do I have a motion to approve 6.13?
We may have your discussion first before making a motion.
Would you like to have a discussion first?
I think we covered my questions in the work session.
Well, I appreciate, okay, go. I appreciate what you said about clarifying that it is for the purpose of making a recommendation, because, and I know that we spoke about it at the work session, but some people weren't there. It's not my intent to create board committees just to create committees. It truly is a way to get the community to be involved.
And just so everybody knows, all I was worried about was that we could, process could overtake progress. We could have a lot of committees that seem like we're doing a lot, but we're not accomplishing anything. That's the only thing I was bringing up that I thought was important for people to understand. But I was assured these are going to be pointed and direct at developing specific recommendations to the board, so I'm satisfied.
This goes a long way to transparency as well. We've just had a watershed moment last November where we got both a bond and an override from our community. And as we, as we start to look at how does the school district move forward, what do we look like in the future, I think having something like this, a program like this, as long as we don't log ourselves down by committee, I think is a very valuable thing. Remember that that bond and override came to us through a committee of citizens who were concerned about the future of the district. And I think that if we have that type of, of response from our community, we should honor that, and we should be inviting people in.
Was, is there anything that would prevent the board from having these committees without putting, without having it put into policy? I, it seems that, that you as board president would already have the right, unless our attorney has advised us, or Arizona School Board Association has advised us that we need this policy. But it just seems to me that it, I just don't like duplication, and I...
Well, this isn't for a policy, is it?
No.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of if you wanted to discuss, is there a committee that you have on your mind that you would like to appoint or to begin at this point? So this gives you the agenda, I am in order to discuss that.
Correct.
In a public meeting.
And I think it also, you know, there was some question about how we made decisions on the trust board, and how we came up with that. So I think this all kind of plays into the same, how we're going to select people, if you will. So I think it's important that we move forward on, for me, policy committee is the most important, because I think that we need community members to address, go through policies and make recommendations.
Here it says the board may direct the composition of a subcommittee. Does that mean that the board approves not just one member or the board president? It would be the board?
Oh, it's the board. The board is going to make the decisions, it's not my decision.
A who is on the committee?
Absolutely.
I have a question. It says, "The governing board members have expressed interest in establishing advisory committees to address upcoming issues or areas of focus." What are the upcoming issues or areas of focus? I'd like to know.
Policy committee would be one of them. Discipline within the policy committee would be one of them, that I've got an interest in. Curriculum is one of them, for sure. And, I mean, those are really the two that are the most important.
In the past, I guess I'd like to know, how have committees, we've had committees, but I'm not sure that the board has directed the development of committees, that a lot of times that came out of the administration. Am I correct?
Yes, I think you are, but I think...
No, I guess what I'm talking about here is, all of a sudden, we hire a superintendent, we have these people up here that we can direct to look at certain issues, and they, it doesn't preclude having people in the public, because as I recall in a lot of the committees, there were people involved in the public. And all of a sudden now, it just seems to me, like, the professionals, this is our business. We're laypeople. And, and it doesn't mean that they're not going to be open, or word that's overused, transparent, because any good administration is going to go ahead and involve the public. And, and all of a sudden now, what we're looking at is we're looking at laypeople getting into areas like curriculum, and discipline, and all these other things. But whereas in the past, parents and people in the public were invited in by the superintendent to be on those committees. And that's what bothers me.
Well, I think from my perspective, that's not a transparent process. And I'm not overusing the word, because when I use the word, I truly mean transparent. So we have community members, I'm one of them, that tried every which way I could to be involved. And I was pushed out at every step of the way until I felt forced to run for the school board. So I do in fact think that the board needs to establish a couple of committees in order to engage the public that has been so generous to us. I mean, when the public, when it says that the board is responsible for the curriculum in our schools, I've never been asked about the curriculum in our schools, ever, as a board member. We've never been asked to vote on curriculum in these schools, ever. So yes, we have a lot of professionals here, but these are our community schools, paid by taxpayers. And the only way to ensure that the taxpayer is being represented is to invite them in in a public way. Not in a meeting that Diana sets, or any other director, but in a public way, where there's record that the, that the community members that wanted to participate are able to go on record and say, this is what I said, this is what I presented, this is what our committee proposed to the board. The board has the right to deal with whatever they want with that information.
How many committees were you excluded from?
You didn't have any committees.
No, no, how many things were you excluded from that compelled you to run for the school board?
How many things was that?
Yeah.
I participated in every single school board meeting for 18 months, and I could not get one single board member to meet with me. So I don't know what you mean by how many was I excluded from, I have no idea. Because it was all an internal process, it was not a public process. This is simply just making it a public process.
I'm just saying that, you know, we've had an excellent school district over the years. I've lived in the community a long time, as many people have done. The schools have excelled here. And, and it has never been a thing of where the administration, as I felt, has ever tried to exclude anyone, and they've involved parents in a number of things. I can remember when I was at high school, we involved parents in even the hiring process. The parents are involved in, like, the selection of the superintendent and things like that. By that I mean the, when you're going through and looking at people. So I don't think it's a matter of, in the time I've been here, that anyone wants to cut out the public, because anyone in public education focuses on that word. It is public education. We're responsible for elected people on the school board, and they are responsible for people in the community. Thanks.
I think we've got to parse this out. Diana and her staff have obligations, and they form their own committees to look into many of those things. The board has a responsibility to overview. And in order to do that, we have to be aware of what we're looking at. So my view on this was, and I may be wrong, my view on this was that we were going to form smaller committees, subcommittees, to inform us, so that we could question Diana, or we could say, what are you doing about this, or is this a viable plan, or whatever. You know, one of the things can happen, now, she's a new superintendent, one of the things can happen, if you can maintain the same policies, the same procedures, same curriculum, same everything, for 30 years, and be very happy with it, that doesn't mean it doesn't need to be looked at. And our job is to look at those things and say, what about this? And when you tell us, shut up, it's okay, we say, oh. But that's our responsibility, is to look into these things. That's how I look at it. I'm not saying, and you know I don't want committees, you've heard my statement on it. But I think selected committees to inform the board will put us in a better position when we deal with the administration.
Well, my thought about this is that, Pat makes the point that we have had the public in. Mainly, I'm trying to think who that public is, mainly that public has been parents. And it's, it's really very difficult to get people to serve on some of these committees last a year longer, and people just don't want to give that kind of time. So, you know, what we normally do is go onto parents, rather than just go to the public in general, and ask, would you be interested in serving on this particular committee? So if parents are the public, and I think they can be considered the public, you know, we have invited the public in. The other thing that I, I guess I'm concerned about is sort of a blurring of lines. Let's say there is a district curriculum committee, probably focused on one academic subject, and we have another curriculum committee from the board, and that the people there are seeing things totally differently, and they think that there's, because most of the district's people are composed of educators, and people who are noneducators, they don't, this group doesn't understand, and it takes a lot of, I mean, I can just see some clashing. I'm all for transparency, I'm all for educating people, letting them know, but I don't want to create a situation where there ends up being conflict, and I can, and suspicion. And I can see something like that happening here. Two committees already, you know, one from us, and one from this, I mean, to me, if this passes, it needs to be a work in progress. And when we start our first subcommittee, we need to look at it very carefully, how we created it, what our rules were, how we get communication out, how we communicate with the administration and the staff, and we just probably need to tighten things up. I don't know what those things are going to be, but I predict that there will be problems. I predict there will be conflict along the way.
There probably will. You're probably right.
And that's okay.
And in our form of government, there's always going to be conflict. It's part of the process.
Thank you for letting me know.
But as part of that, I'd like to say, I'm going to read you something that was sent to me, and then was forwarded to each board member. It says, "As you know, the passage of the bottom override were largely successful due to the transparency and accountability with input directly from the community via many town halls. To have subcommittees or committees acting in an advisory role to the governing board and the district, that transparency and accountability will continue. It would send a huge message to the residents of Lake Havasunified, that Lake Havasunified School District is being proactive. If these committees and subcommittees and advisory committees are approved, I'll be more than happy to serve on them." And I'm going to stop reading there, but that came from Mike Bonney, who's a local CPA, who carries a lot of weight in my mind. How do we continue to look at our public who gives us the money, and say, you don't have an active voice? Mike has no children in the district. How do we get Mike into our committee structure if we keep going to the parents, and we don't invite people in? And quite frankly, if we can't explain our curriculum to the average person, if we can't explain our material to the average person, how do we then justify our existence as a district? This is important. We're a community organization at our, at our core. We get funding from the federal government, sure, we get funding from the state, sure, but the core of what we do is community-based. And if we are going to have long-term viability, we got to start involving... And if we are going to have long-term viability, we've got to start involving community. And community isn't just parents. It's people like Fred and Hal and Stephanie who show up who don't have children in the district anymore. It's people like Roger who's sat on the school board, who still comes and still watches over when he's not on his phone. And...
Made you look.
I didn't hear what was going on. Okay. But, but this is, this is important, folks. This is vitally important.
Like I said, I think we need to parse this out, you know? First of all, subcommittees or committees never make decisions. They can't make decisions. All they can do is make recommendations of viable alternatives. And they make a recommendation to the board of something they've seen or something that they've investigated and they say, there's a viable alternative to this. We approach the administration, we say, look, this is what these folks think, this is what we've seen. Is there a reason this can't be implemented or is there a reason it should be implemented? And you have to parse this. You can't say, well, we're going to overpower the administration or the committee's going to make a decision. That's not the committee's job. The committee's job is simply to investigate and either provide facts or provide recommendations. Committees cannot make decisions. So then it gets laid on us to approach the superintendent and say, here's what we found, do you have some alternative to it or is there something wrong with it?
I suggest that the format for these meetings, that the very first meeting begins with, that's at the top, it is curriculum. And I'll ask the public members, what are your processions, district curriculum right now? How do you think, what do you have the things out? You're going to find that they've read something about a school, one school in New Jersey or a school district in Seattle, the way they do this and that, and they assume that our school district does that. That I find that quite a lot in Lake Havasun, is that we are branded by what people read in the news and see on television. And so I think it would be really nice to get all of that out in the open and deal with their fears and their concerns and so that we kind of know where we're going because I...
I agree. I think we can work out the details and this is really just about establishing that we want to go there. And I can appreciate what you're saying, but I've had the opposite experience and this is just me personally. So, and I know a lot of people who don't just make, you know, judgment calls based on a school in some other state, they've actually invested a lot of time and energy trying to help the district and they need a forum besides the call to public where we can't respond. And that's all it really is.
Let me ask a question. The board's been sitting here talking about this. Superintendent, do you see where this would conflict with anything that you have going on?
Actually, when we talk about a board subcommittee, these are open to the public, they're agendized, they're, they're, they're subject to open meeting law, all of those same things. And so when we talk about the greater community, I would see that administration and staff may also have a role on those committees for that greater conversation. What this does is it does allow the opportunity for those people in the community who have a concern in relation to that posted topic to attend as well as the committee members who perhaps might be invited because they've expressed an interest. I was actually just thinking about, we had a young lady who spoke to us this evening about dress code and uniforms. That might be one of the policies that we look at and we would, we would maybe have different invitees to that than we would to the discipline committee or to the curriculum committee. So I do think that there would be a purpose for that, different from a district committee where we, typically when we have a district committee, we're handling the business of the district. And so it wouldn't necessarily be something such as, I use the example of the budget committee because that's my experience this year with the district, is, you know, we were looking at including our, really only our school community in hashing out what would be the best recommendation to bring forward on their behalf. The transparency came in presenting it to the board so that they could see we have a recommendation for those override dollars. I don't know how the public felt about not having a say in how we use those override dollars, we didn't ask them. And so those are, you know, it was a different purpose, it was a different situation. So I think I'm roundabout in answering, I can see a purpose to board committees. I also agree that we don't need to have a committee for everything and that it probably needs to be even more specific than policies, say, we're going to have, our policy committee will be looking at this policy, that would be, or our curriculum committee will be looking specifically at this subject or this grade level as initial, so that they're a little bit more focused because otherwise there, it can be unwieldy.
In your experience, have you seen this before?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I have.
And it worked well?
It did, yeah.
Well, this is, these are created thoughtfully and we adjust as we go and it can be very healthy. If we don't do it that way, it could be very unhealthy. Fred?
I've lived here five years. I have no children in the district. Most of my grandchildren and great-grandchildren live in Riverside. I'm sure someone has heard of that, Taker County. And my vested interest is, I want children, wherever they live in our 50 states, to help my grandchildren and great-grandchildren through life along with them, wherever they live in this 300 million people country. And so when I moved down here, I belonged to the Association of Former Intelligence Officers in Las Vegas. And they assigned me Mojave County. So one person, I go to Bullhead, I go to Kingland, I go to Fort Mojave, I go here. I've even gone down to Parker, which is in La Paz, but that's okay, they're, they're close. We almost became part of La Paz County, this, this city did. So that's why I'm speaking here at the high school. I give presentations from Cali George, who's got me signed on four years ago to give talks to students about getting a career in intelligence. And so you were talking about committees last night, the three of you. And I would sit on a committee as long as it isn't a greet, meet and retreat, like you said in the newspaper, Mr. Ward. I do read what you say sometimes. So if there's going to be a committee and civilians like me are going to be on it as advisors or something, I kind of belong to a CTE committee here for council, but they never seem to do anything and you're right. So if you're going to set some committees, I would like to be on one with technical, drafting and aircraft mechanic. Now, some of the courses you teach in the automotive section are identical to what a student would learn to be an aircraft mechanic, except some of the volages are different. They use 28 volts, cars use 12, that kind of stuff. We use 60 cycle in our HAVLS or HERS. Airplanes use 400 cycle, it's on the big plane. There's some differences. But you can integrate it with $1.98 into an automotive electrical class. And when the kid who wants to be an aircraft technician, wants to go to AIM in Phoenix or AM in Las Vegas, he got a leg up, he doesn't have to, or she, doesn't have to take all the courses that other students, so it's cheaper if they get part of it in the high school. And you can integrate it into the automotive section. And I can help you do that.
You are a great resource for our community and I'm very appreciative that you come to our meetings and want to help.
I won't let you do anything else, five satellites. I'd like just a second, one last word. If we're going to do this, I think we need to be a little bit careful. It's very easy. It's, please don't anybody be offended. It's sort of like the PTA. Who belongs to the PTA? The parents who have a sincere interest in the school, the same parents, they're always involved. And the other 500 sets of parents are out here doing nothing. I mean, they care, but they're just not participating. With these committees, I think we have to be careful too, that we don't wind up picking somebody I know who's really qualified. And pretty soon, we look at all of our committees and we've got the same 10 people sitting on all of our committees. We have to make sure if we're going to get the community involved, we do some type of random selection. We ask people to volunteer and then we look for people who haven't been involved, get their input into the committees. If that makes sense.
The city actually has a forum we can still do that.
A forum?
I have a question because with the committees, if they're advising the board, is there going to be something put in so that it doesn't circumvent the superintendent and our board? Because the aspect is, we hired superintendent to be your representative to our district. They are your representatives to the district and when we run everything. And I understand having advisory committees so that we get a lot of people in to talk about it. But if the superintendent and board and our directors are not the informational part of the ability to be involved in that and it comes straight to the board, we circumvent the people who basically have been hired for you to work on this. And I have a problem with that because if our superintendent doesn't know what's going on, the legal part of it and the other parts that come on and the support that she does have with us and the board and the community right now, we don't want her to lose that.
This is, this is what Pat was concerned about.
So my, my concern is making sure that all of the information, so that they are involved in this because if we put together a committee that only reports to the board and not to the super, that's, that's the only thing I'm saying because that's the only concern that I will have with it, is to make sure that the information that the superintendent has.
I can answer part of that. She'd only been here about a month and a half, Diana?
Yeah.
She and I met for quite a while and I showed her some slides and, so, no, that's not a concern.
I just want to point out that in the elementary handbook that we postponed this evening, the school's responsibility is to solicit parent and community input regarding the education of students it serves. And I want to know how that's done because I tried to serve and it wasn't until I became a board member that I was allowed to serve. So this is just to set up a way on which the public can engage, the public that pays the salaries of everybody in the district to participate in an open forum. And I think this is really being stretched really thin in all the what-a, 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 what-a.
Well, and when we talk about that, we have our PTAs, we have our committees at the schools, we invite the public in. We have people from, I mean, I have a guy who runs Bird King, we have kind of a drive-through, we have all of them at different periods in time come in, talk to us about what we're doing, our curriculum is open to the public, we invite them all to come in. We have people, you know, Hal and the rest of...
How are you, I don't mean to interrupt, but how are you inviting the public?
Well, they come through, the elementary school's principal is a little different than the district office. We solicit them, we open it up, we send the flyers out to everybody and everyone was invited to come into our...
But they have to know about it.
Well, yes, and I agree. But the other side of it is the amount of stuff that goes out to it. And one of our board members came to the school and we flooded, you know, when you guys came through and his kids were at the school, we flooded them with stuff every week. Blackboard, everything we could do to get people in. And it wasn't just school members, it wasn't just people who were parents, we had community members and everything.
I'll, I'll vouch for you. You had a great open door policy when my kids were there and I, you know, anybody could have walked up knocked and you would have invited them for a few minutes of talk.
And my, but my concern with it was that when I put a committee together, that if they would have went to the superintendent about what we were doing at school instead of coming back to me, I would have, I would have been out of the information. And that's the only thing I'm saying is I want to make sure that superintendent is in the mix a little when the information comes through because it's hard when the information doesn't come to you so that you know, especially when you're running the whole district. That's the only part of it.
And I never felt that I would be excluded, so, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I'm confident about it.
Now we can make a motion.
Oh, we didn't make a motion yet.
Can include if you want, maybe, did you give these up to who's on it or can be just a general one?
I make a motion that we create a policy committee and a curriculum committee and that at our next board meeting, we come back with our suggestions on what that needs to look like as board members.
Second.
Fair enough. Any questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. Now, all of a sudden, we're hearing a policy committee and a curriculum committee. Has this been proposed to you, Superintendent? And that's, that's the important thing to me, that we have this communication with the professionals, the people that are hired by the district on these things like this.
I just want to remind everybody, we had a teacher at the work session that was retired after 27 years, who was very happy to hear that we were going to bring back committees because she felt like they were very important and it was a huge loss when they were wiped out. So I just wanted to remind, for those that weren't here at the work session, so. If there's no other questions, I'll call for the vote.
Ellen Ward?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
John Nelsden?
Yes.
Pat Leary?
Yes.
Nicole Collins?
Yes. Action item 6.14, approval of vouchers, student activity funds and auxiliary funds. Mr. Murray.
Madam President, members of the board, it's a recommendation that you, as a board, approve new vouchers for March of 2017. The student activity funds for K for February 2017 and student activity funds for nine through 12 for that same month and year, and the auxiliary funds for February 2017 as well. Also in front of you is a sample of what was proposed in previous meetings to perhaps have a little bit of a breakdown as to what some of those funds actually contain. It's, it's not the full amount, but they're more of the large ticket items so you can see a little bit of what makes up the expenditures in those funds.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve 6.14?
So, please, a second.
Any questions?
291, is that medical fee for service?
291 is Medicaid Public School Program.
Okay, so, so we were reimbursed by a recipient?
We get funded through PCG, which is a third party provider through the state Medicaid program.
Okay.
Because we are eligible under the Medicaid Public School Program.
So we receive money from them or we're paying money to them?
We're receiving funds and then we also pay out certain fees if there are specific cuts that go through. But the 291 would be the funds that we're spending out of our budget that, I do the budget is a 291, might be different. So we do fund specifically purchased materials and supplies for our special education programs. We do pay for our staff that oversees that monthly billing program and do special needs coordination and transportation services. And then we also pick up things that come up that are not in our budget, additional therapies that we look at as outside evaluation. Thanks.
And then 550, we got insurance proceeds?
550 was, I believe, that was for emergency services for SURF Pro.
Okay.
$5,073.97.
Something broke?
Flooded.
Ah, that happens.
It was.
I appreciate the summary. That'll make it easy.
And if you want, like I said, it's a work in progress, if you see something you want added to it.
I like the sampling like that.
I do too. I would just, I only have one question and it's not in particular to these vouchers, but is fund 525, is that the, I thought that was the fund that we were supposed to keep all of our auxiliary money in, but we show it as 526. Or maybe we don't, extracurricular activities. So can we add 525 to our listing?
I'll, I'll put it up, I'll make a note of that.
Thank you.
Excuse me for just a moment, I'll be right back.
Yeah, 526 is extracurricular tax credit, but I can, I can look to see if we can add 525.
What would 25 be, 525 be?
Auxiliary.
It's, there, there's breakdowns of funds, make it kind of drill down to be a little more specific, so I'll look into that for you.
I think 525 includes the bookstore, athletic activities and it's the auxiliary ops. I just came across it in statute, that's why I was wondering, because I was like, oh, look at my book and it wasn't there.
We already have it over here.
Is that with the breakdown, I mean?
Auxiliaries, but the last...
But, but I'd like to see it in the big number. But I'd like to see it in the big number.
That's fine, okay.
All right. Well, this is where we could have tabled the motion. Could go ahead and call for the vote.
You could.
I'll go ahead and call for the vote.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Ellen Ward?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes. All right. Action item 7.1, informational items, Mrs. Desire.
Thank you. I just wanted to give a little bit of an update on the donations, as we typically do. This month, we had about $8,000 in cash donations, which again, we talked about those monthly donations, it's amazing how much our community gives to our schools. In this particular month, we had a lot of our service clubs and nonprofit organizations that made the donations, and so we really do appreciate that, I wanted to thank them for that. I also wanted to share, we received an official letter to the board recognizing Thunderbolt Middle School for a Capturing Kids' Hearts National Showcase Award for 1617. I did send some information out to the board, but since we received the official notification that came in, there is criteria for this recognition, and this is the second time that Thunderbolt has received that recognition. One of the interesting things about this I just received today, and I don't have it in front of me, I apologize, but ASU is doing their senior capstone. Thank you. I lost it completely, senior project, it's not their senior project, their senior capstone presentation. And one of the students in the psychology department gathered all of our data and looked at the effectiveness of the Capturing Kids' Hearts with that data over the last 10 years. So we're anticipating the results of that particular project, it should be interesting to see.
Very good. Thank you. Any board member updates?
Yeah, just a comment, Scott, I understand your athletic department at the high school received state recognition, didn't it?
Yes, they did.
And that was for... What was that?
They received the 5A, which is the largest classification in athletics in the state of Arizona, the first year that it's being presented, the sportsmanship award.
School of the year.
Roger and myself will be attending the AIA luncheon on May 15th, don't quote me on that, but it's around that time should be presented, that award, after state.
Congratulations.
I would like to hook on to what Pat said and what Scott said. When I became the principal of the high school, Roger Berger became the AD, and he was very committed to the concept of victory with honor. And, you know, he had coaches there that hadn't quite had that idea yet, but that everything is not about winning, it's about winning with honor. And he put that in place, and his coaches came on board, and because of that, the athletes and the parents came on board. And I was reading last night about Hamilton High School in the Chandler School District, which since 2003 has won seven state championships in football. And they have a terrible situation. In paper, it was called hazing, but if you drill down, it's actually sexual assault by football players, new football players coming in. If you read a description of it, it is horrible. The more you drill down...
Maybe we could go into detail about that at the moment.
Okay. May I say some more? Not about that, but I want to say some more about what they found the boys did.
I just wanted to stop that conversation.
Well, I want to be transparent and open.
I understand that.
What has happened with those boys, because its parents in the program have said that winning was everything, that was all. The boys have, for several years, broken into homes, they've done drugs, they've posted raunchy videos, and yet they still got to play. They still got to dress out, and they still got to play in the games. That's an entirely different culture from what we have here at this high school. And what we are all about here, as far as I'm concerned, is molding and guiding young people to grow up, to lead good lives and have good lives. And our sports program can play a true, just such a strong elemental part into that. And so I'm so proud of our high school, I'm proud of Roger, I'm proud of you and the administration and the coaches at the high school, because it's not easy to maintain that, because some parents, you know, they just really want to win, and that's everything, but we've maintained that, and I'm sure it's not always been easy. So I congratulate you too. I have one or two other things to say. I understand there's a survey now for staff, or at least teachers at the school, to take about the, I guess it's the building climate, and that is sponsored by Arizona School Boards, by the Association for School Business Officials, by AEA for the Arizona K-12 Learning Center. And when, this has been given to schools all over the state, I understand that if half of your staff, and there are a couple of more requirements, fill out this survey on the computer and get it in, that we will have access to the results. I would very much like to see what the results are in as many schools as possible, so I urge the principals to, and the teachers here, to go back and get your staff to fill those surveys in. And then the last thing that I wanted to say, is Carol, please correct me if I'm wrong, but once the legislature goes back into session, the Arizona Legislature, they're going to take up capital funding. Is that correct? I didn't hear you say a bill that dealt with capital funding. But I've been getting, I've been getting information that that's the next thing, as far as these ESAs go. I want everyone here to be aware that with the ESAs, that if you're, if you have a child who is in a district school, anywhere in the state, who transfers and gets into a private school, a religious school, a home school, or any school in somebody's garage, doesn't matter, be any kind of school, that that child transferring out of a district school will get $400, will take $400 with them to the new school for capital funding. Now, a child transferring out of a charter school will be worth $1,800 to the new school he transfers into with his ESA. But in our district, as in every district in the state, all our kids are worth $60 apiece for capital funding. And what I would ask is, aren't Havasu's kids worth more? Why are Havasu's kids worth less than the other kids in the state? And I would like an answer from our legislators about that.
Can we give the $1,800 if we give the charter school kids to Congress?
You know, it's the ESA program. It's the ESA program.
If there's no other reports from anybody on the board, or the directors, I'll go ahead and, is there any call to the public, or last call to the public? Going ones? All right, I'll go ahead and, is there any questions from the press? I'll go ahead and call for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Terry.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Ellen Ward?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?